All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:05. First thing, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor to any citizens' comments. Okay, then we're gonna move right along to new business. First on the agenda is the audit presentation from Frank Soretti of Powers &amp; Sullivan.
Love you.
Thank you for having me here tonight. It's a pleasure to be here to present the results of the 2019 audit. I'd like to start off by thanking the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the rest of the finance team for all the cooperation and assistance that we received during the course of the audit. As usual, we got a great audit package when we got here. And actually, a lot of the information that we requested, probably about eighty or ninety percent of it, was uploaded to our portal before we even get out here, which is greatly appreciated on our part because it makes the audit go a lot smoother. And I'd just like to thank the assistant superintendent for that, like past years. Another great job. The audit, from our standpoint, went very well. One of the more critical areas in the audit is the cash. Cash is always like a high-risk area in the audit and something that we look very closely at. And we found that the cash reconciliation procedures were very strong, that the cash accounts were being reconciled on a monthly basis, which is what you want to see. Reconciling items were easily explainable. There was nothing there that we couldn't prove out. The reconciliations, like I said, are being done timely, and they're being reviewed and approved. And you have a good, strong process there, good, strong controls over the cash and the bank accounts. So that's really good to see. Also, just the fact that the audit can be done so early in August, like we're out here early August, that's an indication that you have good systems and good controls in place and that things are happening that you would want to happen on a monthly basis. You have good monthly closing procedures. And it means that throughout the course of the year, because all of that stuff is happening on a timely basis, cash is being reconciled, all of your monthly closing procedures are being performed, that you should be able to rely on the information that you're getting off of the financial system. Your transactions are being processed properly. We tested transactions. We found that they're being coded properly. There's good supporting documentation. There were no issues. There's no internal control issues as, you know, our standards would define. And if there were, we would've told you about them a lot sooner than now. We would've brought that to your attention right away. So, from our standpoint, it was a very good audit, and we had very good cooperation. Just to get into the presentation. Just gonna go kind of quickly through the first couple of slides here. But this first one talks about the principal objective of our work is the expression of an opinion on the district's financial statements. We perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards because this district receives federal funds. We're responsible for planning the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatements and freely presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We met with the treasurer and the super assistant superintendent to go over the financial statements. We reviewed the financial statements, and everybody was comfortable with the information that's being presented in them. We tested the amounts and the disclosures, and we assisted with drafting them. That's just a normal part of the audit process. And based on all of our audit work, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's the best opinion that you can get. That means you have a clean opinion. And there were no adjustments that we had to propose to correct any errors on the general ledger. So that's another good sign that things are being recorded properly on your books. And so there's nothing to report there. Next slide talks a little bit about our responsibilities as the auditor. As I mentioned, you know, we're responsible for expressing an opinion on the financial statements. The audit includes obtaining an understanding of internal control sufficient to plan the audit and determine the nature and timing of our audit procedures. It's not designed to provide assurance on internal control or identify reportable conditions. But we are responsible for ensuring that the school committee is aware of any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. I think I was off a slide there. Sorry about that. Management is responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements. I'm not gonna try to back up. That was actually the previous slide. The fair presentation of the financial statements, establishing and maintaining effective internal controls and identifying and sharing that they comply with laws and regulations. As far as financial results, for the general fund, your fund balance totaled $1.6 million. You had reservations against that of $182,000 for encumbrances, and that's just related to open purchase orders at the end of the year. And you also had voted to use $147,000 of E&amp;D to fund the 2020 budget. That left you with $1.3 million of unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. That's essentially the starting point for the E&amp;D calculation, and your E&amp;D is very close to that number. And it represents approximately four percent of your budget. And over the last five years, that's pretty much what your unassigned fund balance has averaged. So what that tells me is that you've got good systems in place to where you're able to control your spending and predict your revenues and control your spending so that you're coming out in a very similar point every year after year. That's been happening consistently now for about five years. If you went back in time, it wasn't always so consistent, but it has gotten more consistent over the last several years. So that's, you know, telling me that you have good controls and good processes in place. From an operating standpoint, your operations resulted in a $182,000 decrease in your fund balance. The decreases were mainly due to using $347,000 of E&amp;D to fund the operating budget. And then you also had a decrease in your carryforwards from the prior year. And that's really just timing. It just means you spent more of your current year budget. Those decreases were offset by a revenue surplus of about $215,000. And that was mainly due to state aid coming in better than anticipated. And you also had some Medicaid and charter school reimbursements that were better than anticipated and investment income as well. Expenditures were $101,000 under budget, and that was just $21,000 for administration, $33,000 for instructional, and $46,000 for student services. The slide just talks a little bit about excess and deficiency. It's subject to Department of Revenue review and approval. It can be appropriated for any valid school purpose. This year, it's estimated to come in at $1.2 million. I'm not sure if it's been submitted, but I know if it hasn't, it's ready to go, and it should probably be going out, you know, this week or next, I would say. And statutes allow you to maintain five percent of your next year's budget in E&amp;D, but the school committee has voted a local limit of three percent. Right now, if your E&amp;D is certified at $1.2 million, you'll be $462,000 under the state five percent limit, and you'll be $217,000 over the local three percent limit.
Can you give us that number again, please?
Sure. The number that's over the three percent?
Uh-huh.
$217,000?
It's right here. Great, thank you.
And the next slide here talks about your OPEB pension liabilities. Your OPEB liability totaled $36.8 million at the end of the year. That was an increase of $1.8 million over the prior year. And that's mainly just due to service cost, which is the benefits that are accrued during the year for current active employees and then interest on the liability. Your discount rate was 3.25 percent. That's the same rate that it was last year. And because you're not putting any money aside for OPEB in a qualified trust, you have to use what they consider to be the twenty-year AA municipal bond rate. So you don't really have any flexibility with what your discount rate is. It just kind of goes up and down with what the market's doing for those bonds, and that's where the 3.25 percent comes from. That discount rate has a big impact on your liability. And, you know, if at some point in time you are able to start putting money aside and come up with a plan, like a policy, to continue to put money aside, then you may be able to start to get a blended rate, a higher rate, which would help to lower your liability. Currently, your employer contribution is sixty percent. By state law, you can go as low as fifty percent. But sixty percent is pretty low compared to what we see in other communities. And so I think that's a pretty decent rate in terms of keeping the liability down. Your net pension liability totaled $11.5 million at the end of the year. That's a $1 million increase from the prior year. And that liability relates mainly to employees that are in the Essex regional retirement system. And the teachers and certain administrators are part of the mass teachers' retirement system. And that liability is completely paid by the state. The liability associated with the district at the state right now is about $53.8 million. And they paid about $5.4 million in 2019 on behalf of the district. So that was what I wanted to mention about the financial statements and highlight to you. And then I was gonna talk a little bit about the management letter. The management letter, we had a few new comments this year. First one related to the cash and investment policy. And the cash and investment policy talks about limiting unsecured deposits to no more than 25 percent of the district's cash. And when we reviewed the cash, it was a lot higher than that. And so the treasurer worked with the local bank, and they came up with another option for investing that money into an overnight sweep account, which is fully insured. So now those deposits are fully insured with the bank, which is great. Very low risk now with the full insurance coverage. And that was mainly it related to that. There was another part of your policy that talks about investments being in the name of the district and under the district's tax ID number, but based on correspondence that the treasurer's had with the bank. The way that you're doing it is pretty much standard practice. So although it's, I would say that it's substantively the same as what your policy reads. I mean, you could consider tweaking your policy a little bit if you wanted to to match that. But from our standpoint, we don't see an issue with you leaving it the way it is.
So what you're saying is it's registered differently than that? Our accounts are registered differently than that?
Yeah, so the investments are registered under the Eastern Bank Wealth Management Division, I believe. And that's pretty much standard industry practice from what they're saying. And your cash and investment policy is pretty much a template that's been going around the state. So the majority of the communities, if you look at their cash and investment policy, it's gonna look very similar, if not the exact same, as yours. So based on the correspondence and everything that the treasurer received, I think that you're okay the way you are with that. Next comment related to procurement. And it was really just a comment recommending that you consider trying to utilize and centralize the procurement information. Right now, a lot of the procurement information is maintained by the departments. And the system has the ability to be able to upload copies of quotes and source documentation into the system when people go and request those quotes. And then that way, when someone's reviewing a requisition or reviewing a purchase order for approval, that information is right at their fingertips. They don't have to go and chase it down. And it, I think, would really help to streamline the process. So that was something that we recommended that you consider making like a standard practice. And then there was another comment related to census data testing and the other post-employment benefits liability. So with the implementation of GASB-75 a couple of years ago, there's greater emphasis on the census data because that liability is now reported, like right on your financial statements where it was more of a note disclosure in the past. And one of the things that's kind of important with that is having good documentation for married couples to, you know, make sure that people that say they're married really are married and so that you're not giving benefits to someone that shouldn't be. And then the census data is used to determine your liability, too. So it's important to have good, accurate data for that. So we're just recommending that you put some procedures in place to make sure that you have those marriage licenses on hand and keep those in the employee files. And the last comment relates to documentation of internal controls. And this is related to the federal awards and the uniform guidance. This is something that came out a few years ago, and it's really kind of required now. It doesn't impact you too much because you don't meet the threshold to have a single audit completed. You're at about $700,000 of expenditures of federal awards, and the threshold is 750. So you're getting pretty close. So I think it would be a good idea to get it in place should you get up to that $750,000 threshold. And if someone else came in to look at your grants from like another agency, they might be looking for it, too. So I just think it would be a prudent thing for you guys to put that in place. And I know you have a template, and I believe the plan is to try to get that done in 2020. And so that was it for the management letter. And these comments in here, I think I said upfront, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, nothing in here that we consider to be an issue. These are more comments to, you know, help you to improve and maybe some more efficiencies in some areas. But nothing here that you should be concerned about.
I have one question, and maybe then he can answer. Do we always get reimbursed for charter school tuition?
Only if we have students attending it in that year. So last year, we had students attending charter schools, so they reimburse a portion of it.
And it tapers down, right? The longer they're in the charter school, it tapers down.
Correct.
I can't hear you. What?
So the longer they're in the school, it tapers down. So the first year, we might get, say, eighty percent reimbursement. Second year, it'd be sixty, and so on.
Thank you.
So I actually just wanted to point out on slide nine, the OPEB liability actually increasing by $1.8 million from the prior year. And just point out that last year, when we were in our joint meetings, it was said that we couldn't afford to actually fund an OPEB, fund the OPEB right now. And, you know, just to let you know that, you know, it's costing us exponentially more than we were actually gonna put in last year. So the original, the thirty-year plan that we proposed last year was for an initial investment of $250,000. And, excuse me, as I said, the fact that we didn't do it has actually cost us $1.8 million. For the town of Wentham alone, that's $612,000, give or take. So it's definitely something that we want to be looking forward. And I imagine this board would want to move forward with the proposal yet again and just really stop kicking this can down the road.
Is that what that means? Is that $1.8 million has been discounted with the discount rate of the, right? So $250,000 cannot be equated to $1.8 million because they're ones in future time and ones in current time?
You know, the actuaries can really help you a lot with different scenarios on funding and how those will impact your liability.
Okay.
Part of it is having like a plan in place where a policy that we're gonna fund this amount every year. It's not just putting in $250,000 one year and not having a policy that says, "We're gonna keep doing this." That's the important part when it comes to like the actuary, you know, doing, making the determination. $250,000 might impact the liability because, you know, if you're going out thirty years with that, it adds up and it compounds. They can help you with, you know, what you need, run new scenarios that will help you determine what's a good amount to put in and, you know, how much you need to fund it to be able to get the discount rate up to, you know, what you think is a good risk discount rate. You may not want to be fully funded because it might cost too much to do that, but you might want a blended rate that's higher that's gonna get your liability down a lot. There's, in the financial statements, there's something called the sensitivity analysis. I don't know if you saw that. It's in the footnote. Do you have the financial statements in front of you?
Yes.
Yes, we do. It starts right away. Now he's gonna tell us. It's right away.
It starts on page twelve.
Yep, so if you look at page forty-one.
Okay, so that's his page forty-one.
Our fifty-four.
Oh, okay. It's note twelve, and it's the second page of note twelve, and it's at the bottom of the page. It's called the sensitivity analysis, sensitivity of the total OPEB liability to changes in the discount rate. And so it tells you that your discount rate at 3.25 percent, your liability is 36.8 million. If your discount rate went up one percent to 4.25, your liability would go down by almost three point, actually, $5.5 million. It's a pretty big swing for a one percent change in the discount rate. And conversely, if the discount rate went down by one percent, your liability would go up by a similar amount. By about six, six point eight million dollars. A one percent change in the discount rate can have a really big impact on the liability.
Right, I'm trying to find the minutes, but I remember last winter, last spring, we actually had an actuary in here and sort of go through all this with us. And the plan was for a step thirty-year plan, so 250 was the initial. Moving to 500 the second year, and so on. So, but again, I'm just really trying to show the importance of really starting now versus just continuing to kick the can down the road.
Yep.
So you mean it was, it wasn't an actuary, it was a representative from the fund?
From an investment firm.
From the investment firm.
I don't think we've ever had the actuary.
Well, it would've been based on actuarial tables that they did.
Yeah. So I guess, all right. My question was something totally different, so.
I'm familiar with your actuary. I know he does that all the time, though. He'd be happy to come in and do that for you.
I don't know if this is a question you can answer, but do most districts and, regional and single districts, do they have a policy in place for OPEB now? Do you know, or from best of your knowledge, or?
I think most is a little strong. I would say that they're starting to. I know that one very nearby, Manchester Essex, does, and they're funding theirs. They could be a good resource to speak with. I know the assistant superintendent over there did a lot with it and putting that in place. And I think they did some negotiations with the unions to try to, you know, make some concessions where they could, you know, come up with a way to fund it. What the exact details are of it, I'm not really sure, but I'm sure he'd be happy to share that with you. I think that he did some presentations with Masbo where he talked about it.
Manchester Essex put it in the contract. That's how they were able to fund it with the contracts. They included it. And so they've been funding it for several, I wanna say, five years now. They've been, OPEB's been funded, and they did it through the contracts.
Thank you.
Nope, I just wanted to thank Frank and Powers &amp; Sullivan. They've provided a lot of guidance for us over the past seven or eight years that they've been here, not only for me but for the district. Just wanted to thank them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I do have one question. So, I can't help myself. So this past spring, we had our two-town meetings. And the town of Wentham did not approve one of the Warren articles. So that means because the town of Hamilton voted first, they had approved a higher amount than was ultimately decided upon. Is it necessary for them now to vote to decrease their previous assessment? Or is the fact that a budget has been approved the end of it?
I'd actually have to go back and look at the law. I'd actually have to go back and look at the law on that before I could give you a good answer. I don't want to just shoot off my hip on that one.
Okay, I think it's a question we've asked Powers and Sullivan before and has been answered by auditors before as no, but.
No, you don't need to go back?
Right, that it's assumed.
I think where it's a lower amount that was finally approved, right, you approved a higher amount, that would be my guess.
Yeah, okay.
But I'd like to double check it and I can get back to you on that.
Super, thank you.
Yep.
I think that's it, Frank, thanks for taking your time, and have a great night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
All right, so this is good news. Here comes Vinnie with more good news. The FY '20 updated budget forecast.
Vinnie and I are actually going to co-present tonight.
Do we have anything here on that? I never saw anything on the, we don't have anything for that, right?
I don't know if we don't.
We got nothing.
Okay, so we're here tonight to talk with you about FY '20. We just heard a little bit from the auditors about the FY '19 audit. We're going to give you an update where we are today in terms of our current budget while we're also planning forward for FY '21. So we have two objectives for tonight. The first objective is to provide you with the updated FY '20 budget forecast so that you as the school committee and our stakeholders can really understand our fiscal reality.
And in addition, we would like to communicate our strategy to manage the FY '20 budget deficit while minimizing the impact on our students.
So two big objectives tonight. As you all know, on July 18th of 2019, about two years into the FY '20 fiscal year, we all received this preliminary budget forecast which was projecting that we were in a $638,000 deficit. What we've been doing over the past several months is employing several strategies to control spending while also working together to get a strong sense of where are, where is the misalignment in the budget as it pertains to the needs of our current student population. The good news in this FY '20 budget forecast is that this forecast included the addition of a seventh-grade kindergarten teacher which became a reality and the addition of a new preschool teacher and a preschool teacher's assistant or TA which also both became a reality. Always like to find a bright spot. But with that being said, we've been working through the summer with this number, $638,000, in mind. And like I said, implementing several strategies to try to mitigate that. So the key areas that we wanted to focus on were personnel. Obviously, given that that's the largest portion of our budget, we wanted to try to manage that as efficiently as we could. Tuition is something that's a little less in our control, but also a big financial impact and was projected to be over a half a million dollars over what was budgeted. And then looking at transportation. Obviously, if students are being tuitioned out of the district, we have to get them there. So when we look at personnel, we really think about three things. One is breakage, this happens every year. We plan our budget in December, November, October, January, well before we know who's actually going to retire, who's going to resign or choose to not return to the district. And often that allows us to see some cost savings, if you will, with turnover. Similarly, it can also cause increased or unbudgeted costs depending on how we hire. So we took a standpoint, really maximizing the opportunity of all the transition that we experienced, particularly at the central office, to really think about putting in a delayed recruitment and hiring strategy. We wanted to, as soon as positions became vacant, get them posted, but then try to be as strategic as possible in terms of the timing when we brought those new folks into the district. We also looked for opportunities of resource reallocation and realignment. Part of that really comes from our principals doing their due diligence, looking at the needs of their current students, and then assessing the staff alignment to that need. And we were able to conserve a few FTEs from one school and bring them over to another school who had an unbudgeted increased need.
So as Julie previously stated, most of the breakage we go through is through teacher retirements or resignations. As you can see here, we've included our FY '20 teacher salary schedule. Of approximately our 185 teachers, half of the teachers are on the bottom step 12. Of that, half of those are in between a master's 60 or a doctorate 75. So when these exiting employees, whether they resign or retire or are non-renewed, one of our hiring strategies is to bring and recruit in their replacement at somewhere between a master's step four or a master's step six. This results in approximately a $30,000 savings per FTE. As a result of this recruitment strategy we've implemented is a cost savings in three different categories, teachers, TAs, and office personnel. Since the FY '20 budget was approved, we've had approximately 30 teachers either resign, retire, or be non-renewed. In addition to the 30 teachers, we've also hired a full-time seventh kindergarten teacher, as Julie said, and the third preschool teacher. This was an addition of approximately 120,000. But the net result of the 30 teachers that were recruited at our lower step was a net result of savings of approximately $30,000. If you were to exclude the additional two FTEs, it would be more along the lines of 150,000. The second category is teaching assistants. Over the summertime, we had 16 either resign, retire, or be non-renewed. In addition, we also increased this by one FTE, and this is through our preschool program. That cost us an approximately $16,000 decrease to this line. If you were to exclude that, the result would be approximately $40,000 in savings. And the third category is our office personnel. We only had two be replaced over the summer and this resulted in approximately a $7,000 savings. From these three categories alone, we're looking at approximately $58,000 that we saved and this is the net result of an additional three FTEs.
Doesn't close the gap just yet.
So another major recruitment strategy deployed took place at the administrative level. We had 11 personnel changes over the summer and we purposely delayed hiring replacements for some of them. This also, this resulted in a $172,000 savings. In addition to delaying the hiring, we've also been able to reduce the total department by 1.1 FTEs. This was the result of a retirement and we took that position and kind of dispersed the responsibilities into the remaining office staff. So this $172,000 savings includes the reduction of the 1.1 FTE.
We also believe that this reorganization and reallocation of responsibilities, which is going to continue to be an ongoing process throughout the next couple of months, will allow us to create a central office vibe that's much more customer service oriented and collaborative.
So this slide is designed to show you how much turnover we've actually had in the administrative office. Obviously, me and Julie are both new at our position, but some other major positions is my administrative assistant. It's been vacant since August 5th. Our accountant was vacant for approximately two months over the summertime. As Julie mentioned, we took our part-time HR administrator and our part-time assistant HR, combined the two positions into a full-time HR position. As well as previously said, we eliminated our payroll position effective the 16th with her retirement. In addition, one major player was the director of maintenance of facilities. That was also vacant for approximately two months over the summertime. So this resulted in a lot of headaches for us, but about $172,000 savings, so.
Well, thank you so much.
And a lot of support and people stepping up into roles and taking things on in an interim basis that allowed us to have time to figure this out and do a really fast-forward assessment of our.
So even with all the breakage through personnel, we are still coming up short due to our out-of-district projections and our special ed transportation. So just to give you a little overview, our special ed budget was set at 52 placements for approximately 3.7 million. Right now, we are currently running at 56 placements, which is costing us around 4.18 million dollars. This net result is a deficit of 433,000. In addition to that, our budgeted transportation needs were set at 640,000, but our current projections put us at 747, resulting in a deficit of 107,000. So between these two categories alone, it's approximately 540,000.
Can I ask you, when did it jump up to 56 placements? It seemed like it was like 48. I don't know where this all happened.
When I arrived in July, the number I was, the estimate I was given was 58. And so as we talk through the whole presentation, you'll see that there's still some items in motion. But it really, there's a variety of reasons that are really individualized to each student situation that cause these numbers to change. But it's also something for us to be mindful of as a community. We're not alone in experiencing increased needs, specialized needs for students. That's something that gets funded first always. So being really mindful and looking at our projections as we're developing the FY '21 budget, making sure that we're not cutting it too close and really understanding deeply what are the pending cases and what could be the possible outcomes would be a strategy for moving forward.
Yeah, because we can't keep up with this. It's been 100%, over 100% the last, what, three years, two years, year over year? What?
The increase has been 100%.
Increase, it's been 100% year after year and we just can't keep up with that.
So as Julie touched on a little bit of it, we still have a couple items in motion that could have a big impact later down the road. This forecast was set around September 30th, which only, I believe, was 25 days of school had passed. So we still have approximately 160 days left. And anything could happen at that point. So one of the major areas is our out-of-district placements, of course. There are currently 12 pending placements that are not included in any of these forecasted numbers. They could cost us anywhere from, you know, zero to approximately a million dollars if every one of them were placed out tomorrow, which obviously is most likely will not happen, but we want to mention it because it's a possibility. The second major category is health insurance. We, our current policy states that new hires have 30 days to hand back their benefit packages. With all the turnover in staff, we had a lot of late hires that happened in the end of September. So we do not have all the paperwork back. Some of these employees could enroll in health insurance and this could be an additional cost of anywhere up to $80,000 once we get the paperwork back. Lastly is employee leaves. We are a human business servicing humans, so at any point, anything could happen. Teachers, a few teachers could come in tomorrow and tell us they need a maternity leave and it could cost upwards of 20,000 per occurrence, so.
Or paternity.
Or paternity, this could change at any moment. So this is the DESI category slide indicating where our variances are today. At this time, we're not asking for any budget transfers and the reasoning we'll discuss in further slides, but this is what it would look like today if we ended it today.
So through all of those, both the assessment and the refinement of what we're actually spending and looking at those personnel savings, we are able to cut the deficit and the projected deficit in half. This is our dark and scary slide. So that leads us at about 309,350. And we chose not to round this number up. We have not padded this number in any sort of way. We can almost guarantee that this number is going to increase in the negative direction. It is only October 16th and I know that we keep saying that. But again, like Vinnie said, we're a human business serving humans. We have to expect volatility and unpredictable things to happen. But we wanted to have an honest, transparent conversation tonight and show you exactly where we are so that you can begin to understand our strategy for moving forward. So what is our strategy? There's two things we could do. One, we could employ a budget freeze. And what this means is that we would stop all non-essential spending. Another option is to employ a curtailment. And what this does is it asks our staff to be more conservative in their spending. With both of these ideas in mind, we really want to assess what's the impact on our staff and our students. The strategy moving forward is to try to minimize the impact on the classroom. We want our students in Hamilton-Wyndham to continue to receive the top-notch education that they have grown to expect and that they deserve. And so at this time, we are not suggesting or recommending a budget freeze. And the rationale for that, we'll talk a little bit about the implications, but generally, it's horrible for morale. One of the things we want to be very cognizant of is the messaging around our strategy because what we don't want to do is create a scarcity mindset where folks are shut down and stop even asking for what they need because they're so worried about our budget or our financial situations. I've been in districts where that has been the case and it's not what's best or right for our students. So we are recommending that we try to reduce our spending. We went through an exercise with our leadership team last Thursday where they looked at their budgets and each of their individual responsibility lines and looked at ways that they could potentially conserve or postpone spending. And the way we had them do that was really looking at a worksheet that showed what were their FY '17, '18, '19 actuals, what was budgeted for FY '20, what have we spent to date? And then where possibly could they curtail spending? And the way that we've described this to leadership is that we're not saying that you can't have access to those funds, but we're trying to generate as much cost savings as we can, knowing our fiscal reality, knowing that it's only October and our deficit is likely to continue to grow. We are very pleased with the work that the leadership team has done. We don't have a number to put out there just yet because we continue to refine that and I know that they'll be engaging some of their teachers in those conversations, which I think will feel really different. The way we're trying to address this is to say, okay, here's what we budgeted, here's what we've spent to date. What's the plan for these funds moving forward? Is this something that we could postpone or plan for in FY '21? Or is this something we absolutely need today? And all of the principals and directors know that they will continue to have access to those funds if the need arises. We're really just trying to slow down the decision-making process so that it's a shared decision-making process, but that we're also being as fiscally conservative as possible.
And the curtailment is the reason why we're not asking for the budget transfers today because this will drastically affect the numbers and will result in a different transfer needed.
So what options do we have to fill the budget gap? We're at 309,350 today. We really have three options. The first is to reduce jobs. This is not something that we're suggesting today for reasons we'll talk about, but you can imagine that a reduction in force has a major impact on our staff. And it's not just dollars and cents that we're talking about here, we're talking about our people, our most valuable resource. But that is one way to fill a budget gap. The other thing I'll say about a reduction in force is that the earlier in the year you do it, the fewer jobs you have to reduce. So again, there is a separate strategy behind that if the situation became so critical that we thought that was necessary. We are not suggesting that right now, but we just want to be honest about what the options are. The other is to access our excess and deficiency funds. And we'll talk a little bit about the implications of that as we move forward. And the third choice is to look at circuit breaker reimbursement. All of these things have consequences, right, every decision that we make? And we want to be as strategic as possible as we think about this. So again, this is not what we're recommending, I can't say that enough. You know, we want our staff to know that we're trying to take every possible step that we can to manage this deficit, but we do want to also be honest. So what are some of the implications, of course, increased class sizes if we're looking at classroom positions? There could be increased unemployment costs if folks are rifted. And also, it will negatively impact our culture. unemployment costs if folks are rift. And also, it will negatively impact our culture and certainly decrease morale across the district, which we know will impact our students.
So the implications around using a circuit breaker, there aren't totally too many implications as this what it was, this is what it was intended for, to pay for out of district tuitions. But the problem is, is this still might not be enough. Our reserves in circuit breaker might not fully cover our deficit, and if we do access it at that point, it will be completely depleted. For E and D, E and D is not really intended to supplement the operating budget. E and D is more used for unforeseen or one-time events. So if we do try to access this, it will limit the use for our FY twenty budget. So as Frank previously stated, we had approximately two hundred and thou, two hundred and, I believe it was ten thousand above the three percent. We would then access this money, and it would not be there to reduce the twenty-one budget, therefore increasing the need on taxes come next year's budget. And lastly, this would need to go to the town, and if it were to be rejected, it would only result in a bigger impact on staff reduction. One teacher today would be two teachers in April or in silver.
So in summary, our total projected deficit is about three hundred and ten thousand, and these are some of the key actions that we're going to put into place. There's no decision for you to make tonight. We're doing our job as the fiscal managers and implementing, and planning to implement the FY twenty curtailment. We're working with principals about the messaging, and a communication will go out district-wide to our staff so that they're hearing firsthand from us what we're doing and why we're doing it. We're going to continue to monitor our student needs and the impact that these needs have on our budget. We're also going to have ongoing communication with our school committee capital financial planning committee. Ideally, had I posted the meeting on time, we would have shared this with the capital planning committee yesterday. But our goal is to, each time we connect with them, every month when we connect with them, to inform them where we are and what new information we have. And then, of course, they'll report that back to the full committee. And Vinnie will continue to do his quarterly communications with you as well. We will be asking in December for the school committee to make some budget transfers once we have more information and as we reach that sort of mid-year point. And then we'll also make, I can never say that word.
Reconciliatory.
Recommendations in early spring prior to the town meeting. And again, once we have more information. So any questions from you folks?
So Vinnie, the quarterly updates that we'll be getting, do you also send those to the towns?
I believe we are supposed to, so yes.
Good answer.
Right, exactly. It's supposed to be monthly, but I think the towns would be happy with quarterly.
Correct.
Because that would be four times more than they're getting now. Yeah, okay. So when do you, so when would you anticipate if there was going to be a tapping of E and D, making that recommendation? Is that going to be like in a February timeframe or?
We'll be talking about it all throughout the budget process. We're looking forward to having increased communication with our colleagues in both towns. The first joint meeting coming up, we can talk a bit about strategy with that. We're really going to be relying on some of our expert colleagues who've been in their roles longer than we have to sort of help us think about that if that becomes a reality. I mean, at this point, I think that one of the questions we have, is there any benefit of saying we're only going to access fifty percent of circuit breaker and the rest is going to come from E and D? Or, you know, what are some of the different ways to think about this, depending on how much funds we anticipate we're able to generate from the curtailment? We know that the curtailment is not going to solve the problem, but we think it's absolutely essential to show our stakeholders that we're trying to take every cautionary measure, every proactive measure that we can in the midst of this situation. So a long-winded non-answer answer, but I think that that's, we're kind of ready to learn what the best timeline is for that.
I thought you guys did a great job really creatively cutting that deficit in half. Do you think that you've exhausted all those sort of creative?
No. So I just wanted to also thank the leadership team and the principals for helping us in the curtailment exercise. I believe that will help bridge the gap even more, and their hard work will really contribute to it, so.
Great.
So it looks like the main driver for the deficit is, the unfavorability is really the special ed sec pieces, transportation as well as the placements. So as you move forward on updates, can you give us a sense of any, any district-wide efforts to try to manage the placements, I mean, the existing placements, transportation probably, you know, sunk cost at this point, but?
Yeah, I think there's definitely things that we can do. I don't want to speak for Stacy as she's here in the audience, but Stacy Buzik, our director of student services, is creating a team goal that's really studying some cases to really understand what happened when and like what could we have done preventatively. What, we have already started to analyze all of our out-of-district placements and determining, you know, what was the cause? What type of programming are they accessing? Could we create that type of programming in our district? And I think a big next step is really getting out to those schools to monitor our students who are placed out of district and learning about the success that they are having or not, because I think folks would be surprised to know the quality of programming that we're able to offer here in the district and how many students we are keeping in district and servicing here in their local community. So our goal is always to bring students back. So I remain hopeful that through some strategic efforts and some due diligence that we can do that. But it also means looking really closely at our general education programs, how, you know, I think the fact that we've added another preschool, we've tried to maximize that cost by bringing in as many typically developing peers as we can, for a couple of reasons. One, that creates some offsetting revenue, but also it allows us, anytime we can get our students earlier, the likelihood of them needing interventions later on decreases dramatically. And so we might look at, you know, do we want to extend, extend preschool options? Do we want to look at our class sizes in our early grades? I mean, I'm touring around in the schools, and it's not uncommon to see twenty-four, twenty-five kids in a class from kindergarten all the way up through middle school. So maybe we want to take a look at that. We're also looking at quality of instruction and what types of interventions are all students receiving. So there's a lot of things happening at once in terms of really trying to both study that, that challenge that we're facing, but also intervene. And so it, it won't happen fast, but we're, we're trying to move as quickly as we can.
If we look at, if you're looking at, say, trying to bring back some of these programs, this isn't, as you said, it's going to take a process of possibly a year or two. So we have to think short-term, too.
Yeah, it depends. We also have to look at facilities. Do we have adequate space? Do we have adequate access to bring certain programs back? So there's a lot of, a lot of areas to kind of take in, but we will certainly be doing that and synthesizing as we gain clarity and communicating that back with you.
And it seemed adding a class that we had to for kindergarten, it's, we are really tight on space. So it's a lot, both towns, you know, people have said we're declining enrollment, but it really seems in the elementary that we're really tight on space, that we're getting a lot of kids. We're increasing, not decreasing.
Yeah, so we can study the enrollment and share that more publicly throughout the budget process. Actually, Tuesday's our first leadership team budget meeting, and we're starting with enrollment projections and personnel, because that's the biggest portion of our budget. And when we get that right and do that well, you know, everything else sort of falls in line. But partly, one of the things I think we also need to understand as a community is that we do have fewer kids in our elementary schools than we did, you know, in the past decade in some cases. But we also are, the programming looks really different. And so the way we use our space is really different. It's not as simple as counting how many classrooms and dividing it by twenty kids and saying there should be enough space. We have classroom spaces that need to be used for occupational and physical therapy. You know, the preschool classrooms, obviously, that's, that's different and newer. But then also looking at, you know, other types of breakout spaces that are needed for our therapeutic learning environments and for our intervention programs, our math and ELA intervention program. So it's, you know, kind of trying to use something that was built before, you know, with a different philosophy in mind also makes the space issue more challenging. You know, we have students that wear diapering in school, so we have to have different types of space for that. So that's, that's certainly part of the conversation.
That was eye-opening when I did a facility tour and saw that, just how the space is being used differently and the requirements that we need now for certain classrooms and spaces.
Yep, absolutely.
So during the budget process last, you know, as we were doing the budget, one of the things that was discussed is that all of the circuit breaker balance was being used for the budget. Are you saying that not all of the circuit breaker balance was allocated for the budget?
Last year, that's correct. There was leftovers.
Okay. And any idea how much that was?
Approximately three hundred thousand.
Okay.
I think it's a little south of that number, but.
Okay. That's good, because when I had asked that, like, the response I had heard is, yeah, we're using up all of it, but we actually have some.
I think at the end of last year, it was projected we were going to use all of it, but the year ended that we did not.
Okay.
You mentioned that there's twelve pending cases for possible outplacement, and I know it's children and assessing them. Any ideas to when that would become available? No, ongoing?
Yeah, ongoing.
When those are decided, can we know? Thank you.
So part of our plan is to give you an enrollment update at the beginning of every, the first meeting of every month. And in that update, you'll be able to see the breakdown of who's in Hamilton, who's in Wenham, and who's out of district.
Great.
So that'll be a way for us to sort of keep that communication going.
And on that note, we'll be having the allocation enrollment at our first November meeting? Is that the plan?
Yes, on the November sixth meeting.
That's the plan.
Vinnie, come on.
Another position that wasn't on the chart.
Well, yeah, I was wondering where that position was, but I didn't see that there. Okay.
Whereas of September, so that one's not free until the end of the month.
Okay.
I did not.
Okay. The person who does the enrollment is retiring.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, up next, we've got school committee's SMART goals. So we're looking at seventy-two and seventy-four packets. All right, so looking at SMART goal number one, to create a team by June twenty twenty, the Hamilton Regional School District, I'm sorry, school committee. See.
That's identical to what it was last time.
Right.
One of the things we'd like to point out is that at this meeting, we have, in order to stay online with the benchmarks, we would recommend that we fill out this governance rubric for continuous improvement tonight instead of the self-checklist that we've been doing so that we'll have a benchmark for this.
Do we have that available?
It's with your packet.
One of the other things that I would like to request on behalf of the school, the leadership team, is if you look down at the bottom there, that talks about by January eighth, the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District Leadership Team will facilitate a FY twenty-one budget workshop. In talking with our leadership team members, the preference between the two options listed here is option two, which is the two three-hour workshops where you'll hear directly from principals and directors about the return on investment for FY twenty to date, of course, midway through the year. But then you'll also learn what's in their FY twenty-one budget and what is not, or what the unmet needs are. And the goal is really to prep you for that vote on January eighth so that you'll know the budget inside and out. And just to add a further request, if it could be earlier in the day, they would like that, too.
Preferably, I'd go with option one, because I'm out of town, so I could not do option two. And that's, I'm gone every year at this time. And it's a work thing. I can't change.
Okay.
I've already, it's already set, so that's just my constraints. I can only do option one.
I thought when, the last meeting, we discussed the dates, January fourth, there was actually a lot of people still out of town.
Yeah, I probably won't be able to either option, honestly, because I'll be out of town as well. I may be able to be back for the Tuesday one, but I'm coming back from the West Coast, so I may not be totally lucid.
So another kind of outside-of-the-box idea that's not listed here would be to do something during the day on the eighth, leading up to the meeting, the school committee meeting, if that was a possibility.
I couldn't do anything until after January thirteenth.
So that leads into a really interesting discussion, which is that this whole thing, this whole timing is predicated on the fact that we have to provide the towns with a preliminary budget seventy-five days prior to the town meeting, which is a lot of days prior to the town meeting. So it's something that maybe in the future, we can look at, you know, changing in the regional agreement, because it's really about the regional agreement requiring this seventy-five days, you know. And I understand an advance notice is needed to the town, but seventy-five days seems to be pretty excessive, so. But the date is the date. We can't change the date. It's in the agreement. So if we don't have it hit at this point, we can't have it. Unless you want to have it during Christmas break, you know, like, and I don't think the staff is going to want to come and do that then, so.
So where are we getting the six-hour time estimate from?
The number of responsibility centers in the budget and giving them about fifteen minutes each to present to you, and then five minutes for you to ask questions.
Could we then do it in December since we have such a constraint? Because if nothing's going to be done during the December break for teachers, whatnot, I mean, are they going to put that much information, are they going to do it during that break? Or will this, can we get this information before the break?
I think that's putting a lot of pressure on our leadership team. Right, they're already going to, I imagine, be working up until the last minute, and they deserve their break as well.
I understand. But what I'm saying is, this timeframe is right after the break. You know, are they going to be working on that last minute right then?
I would imagine that many folks would probably use that time to refine their slides and prepare for the presentation. But we can bring this back to leadership team and maybe come back with a creative solution.
If I can do it before the December break, I'm sure they don't want to come December break. That's why I'm trying to avoid that. I just, this is something that happens every year. I have a meeting and I'm out for the week.
So I think we have a meeting on the eighteenth of December, so that would be something where, you know, if they did.
Yeah.
A four-hour meeting, and we just, whatever. Yeah, okay.
Can I, can I suggest something totally out of the box, which is if we're tied to the schedule in the regional agreements, just throwing it out there, is there an option of amending that one element, that one section in the regional agreement between now and whenever we need it, whenever the deadline?
No, it would take a two-town vote.
Yeah.
Has to go through town vote.
And it would have to be approved by the DESE after it's. And it would have to be approved by the DESE after it's been two-town voted.
All right.
It's, it's a process, and then it's op- it's like opening up a cannon.
You might be able to get an agreement.
So if you.
From the towns that they would allot a week's dispensation, you might be able to get that.
Can I ask a clarifying question about the process? Um, so typically, that first meeting in January, the, the schedule showed that you vote on the tentative budget.
Mm-hmm.
So could we provide you enough information that you felt comfortable being able to vote on it, knowing that you have another pass at it on February twelfth, and then that would give us some more flexibility about the in-depth workshop?
We, we seem to have this discussion every year, uh, in, in, I, I think there's a fear that the tentative budget tends to stay pretty permanent by some. Um, even though, you know, by definition, it, it's still a work in progress. Um, I wouldn't be opposed to it personally, because I, I, I like the idea of sort of, to try and fit everything in before the tentative agreement is, is sort of wasting time of, of what can happen afterwards, right? Because then you, you need that additional information to then sort of try and, uh, work everything through. I- i- and that's the way I've always liked to view it. Uh, but again, I, i- in, you know, I, I can understand why people, because in the four or five years I've been on here now, I can't see, I don't remember many changes happening from the tentative to the permanent. You know, actually, no, that's not true, now that I think about it, been a couple major.
I think it's mostly because we're afraid of the perception.
Right.
I think I've always been very comfortable with seeing a tentative budget, knowing that's a tentative budget, that's what the name says. I see budgets every day, I know that, I'm a little unusual, because not everybody does, so I understand the process. So I'm very comfortable with seeing a tentative budget, knowing that it's not final, but I'm in the minority in this, I know.
Can I ask, historically, have we met with the leadership team, has the school committee met with the leadership team to?
Not like, that's made for pros.
Not in the past administration, but prior administrations and the first couple of years that Dr. Harvey was here, yes. There were Saturday workshops here.
You know what timeframe, I'm just trying to gauge how close to.
It was fall, it was fall.
Oh, you mean what month?
Yeah, it was.
I just, just wondering when.
Like December?
Yeah, in December, they had, um, December, and it was never wait, it, most of the time, it never waited till January to have the big workshops. So they were either November, December timeframe.
Um, Julie and Vinnie, do you feel that it's too much pressure on the leadership team?
Well, I think we're trying to, this feels a little premature, because I was going to share a little bit about the vision for the process later on in my superintendent's report, um, but anytime you want more inclusivity and more collaboration, it takes more time. And so, um, you know, Vinnie and I could certainly get the budget ready. It, I don't think it would be the best budget we could bring you, because, um, we won't have had the opportunity to have all those conversations. So maybe we can just sort of come back to this as a benchmark, um, after we hear about the whole process, and that might open up our thinking a little bit about some different ways that we can do it.
Yeah.
I'm having a couple of ideas now of how we could do it differently.
My only issue is that I'm looking at a calendar here, and there's one, two, three, four Wednesdays between the eighth and the time that we have to vote the budget. So are people willing to meet, uh, you know, we, we're always having these issues around meeting and everybody being able to get together. So if the, it, we have issues with these, how will we nail down issues with other dates? So. And I get the specialness of these being close to the break, but, you know, there aren't that many other opportunities to have those meetings that are already scheduled. So it would require people to be able to meet during non-normal meetings, which I think can be difficult for all of us, we're very busy, so.
So if we go back to the date that was proposed, I know, um, we're jumping ahead, but, or, the January, um, sixth and seventh, so Stacy and Jean are not able to be here.
Right.
But you potentially could be here the second day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that leaves four of us, five, if.
Well, it's not an action item, right, that's an information session.
Mm-hmm. I'm just thinking, again, out of the box, I know you're away for work, Stacy, but could you somehow teleconference in if it's a, I'm just wondering, just to.
I'm going to be on a five-hour time difference, probably not.
We could also record the presentation.
Oh, we absolutely should record it, yeah, because the FinComs might not be able to come, and they're always going to want a lot of information about this kind of stuff, yeah.
That's what I mean, I think we could probably come up with some creative ideas and bring them back to you.
Yeah, so people should come with, like, their calendars to our next meeting, so we can schedule it, yeah, okay.
I'm not going anywhere, so.
All right, so to really approve this goal, right, we're banging that out, but we don't need to specify that date, right? Because we can even add an option as needed.
And then.
Information comes up.
We'd also like to point out that we have this, um, goal of by December first, the school committee will conduct a formative assessment, um, regarding the superintendent. And tonight, we talked with Dorothy Presser about possibly scheduling her to come and meet with us ahead of that. So that would be something we would need to schedule, maybe the next meeting, or the me- meeting immediately after that, so.
So. And that would just be to go over the new format?
Yeah, well, and it's a formative, it's not a summative, so it would be something that's a little different than one we've done before.
Or again, so it would be just to go over the new format. So that shouldn't be necessarily that.
It's like a thirty-minute thing that you would schedule during a meeting.
Excuse me?
It'd be like a thirty-minute thing that you'd schedule during a meeting.
Yes, but I'm saying that it shouldn't be that time-consuming. It's not like a six-hour presentation like this other.
I hope not.
It should not take longer to be trained on it than it takes to actually do it.
It looked good, really.
That's infuriating with the gavel.
Talk about that later.
So really, the action item that you're t- taking tonight is to approve these three goals. The key actions and benchmarks you can continue to work on in your subcommittees, or they might evolve over time as different things come up or, um, different situations arise. It's just, do you all collectively agree on the three goals?
Mm-hmm. So that's sort of what I was just going to get to also, because even ju- not to jump ahead, but jumping ahead, um, I have not had a chance to meet, I couldn't even, let's get, get on a phone call with you last week, um, to work on the benchmarks for goal two. But, you know, I do think that we, i- in hearing that, and then after, um, everybody speaks, that I think we can talk about what, you know, what these goals are, and actually approve these goals. And then again, just work, keep working, keep refining the action items and benchmarks, because I think these, these are living documents in that, in that sense. You know, it, um, especially in clarify the, clarifying the vision. I, I think that over the course of this year, that should morph and mold a little bit, you know, especially at, in, um, you know, in light of our last meeting, in the presentation we had by the leadership team, and, you know, everything I'm actually picking up in reading, um, you know, r- reading, um, but just, just thinking about how, i- if that's being presented to us, and that it would suggest to us that we read this book, what they're actually trying to tell us by saying, you know, um, hey, you should read this book, and, like, it's really, uh, I don't know if anyone's started, it's really a slap in the face, or, or like a, a wake-up call, um, on, on a lot of changes and practices that, what we do as a district.
And some of the principals are thinking about how they can take components of that workshop and bring it to parents, like, through their friends' groups and things, so, um, there's lots of energy around it. And we're meeting tomorrow to plan your next workshop, which is going to be another fantastic experience.
No, rightfully so, I mean, there's, there's a lot of great ideas throughout there. Um, but, sort of aside-bank, but anyway, the, it, you know, um, in, in thinking about that, in clarifying this vision, that the, it, the vision we have today isn't necessarily the vision we're going to have in six months after everything we, we're going through, and, and I think that's okay. So to, you know, just the fact that we're actually trying to work towards creating a vision and actually engaging, um, you know, stakeholders and, and everyone else within the community, I think that's really the key part, is, is what we're doing to actually get them in here. You know, e- especially in light of, of the, of last meeting, and I, I think there should be more people sort of witnessing that. But, you know, in order for the district to grow. So, um, that leaves just the developing a budget. Did you guys end up having anything?
So Jean, um, Jean outlined it, and I kind of filled it in, and that's what ended up being on this page, I guess.
Is that how it worked, okay.
And so, just so you know, so.
Yeah, no, that's good, because I, because I opened, yeah, so what I, what we did first was, based on the goal, I developed the, um, some of the key actions and the benchmarks around the operating, OPEB, capital needs, um, and then what we want to do with strategy and funding. So we didn't flush out, we didn't get a chance to flush out the details of these elements we weren't able to meet. Uh, we, we will be meeting next, uh, Thursday, not this Thursday, but next Thursday. Uh, so we're, and part of the agenda for that is to, um, it's a, prepare the timeline for the operating budget. We will also hear at that time, um, our first iteration of the capital needs. So, so what you see here on the page is not, uh, fully, um, is not finalized, basically.
This is more of a timeline based on, um, the Mass General laws, um, or our regional agreement, um, and what we've done in the past. So kind of what I put in dates based of what we've done for developing a budget in the past.
Yeah, that's helpful, yeah.
And so that's what that is, but then I added on there, you know, we haven't discussed it, but decision on OPEB, and just, you know, think the processes of what needs to be done, and then capital prioritization of capital items. And of what issues are, so that's how I kind of filled all that out.
Yeah, okay, well, that's helpful to know. I think that, that what, to take away for the rest of the committee, though, is, is the, um, the goal itself, and then the, uh, key actions, right? Because the benchmarks are really just, you know, your milestones that get to that. So, um, if you see something particularly wrong or onerous or whatever, you can certainly raise that. But I think, um, you know, going back to what Julie said initially, that most, some of this stuff is iterative over the course of the week or the year, right, so.
So do we want to take a motion to tentatively accept these SMART goals as a work in progress?
I think so.
So we're accepting the goals only, not the document itself, is that correct?
We're accepting the goals and the document itself is a work in progress, yes?
Yeah, I guess.
What would you like to do? What would you say?
I just think that some of these things aren't fully fleshed out, so.
Okay, so then.
But that's fine, if we're approving just the goals, that's fine.
So, yeah, I think so, because I think the key, the action.
I actually think we approved the goals already. When we assigned them to be worked on in the working groups for the key action items and the benchmarks, I think we had approved the goals at that point. So I have no problem with approving them again, but.
So, yeah, I, I think.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to approve the benchmarks, because if you approve them now, every time it changes, we're going to have to re-prove.
Right.
Because I, I don't, I don't think we really want to approve the benchmarks, honestly. That's just my thought.
No, not the ben- well, the benchmarks let you know when you're reaching your goals, but.
I'm not saying not to have them, I'm saying, like, you know, once you formalize it in a vote, you can't amend it just by amending, you had to amend it through another vote.
But sometimes, but you don't have to keep re-amending it, really, because in the past, well, like, three years ago, we had goals with benchmarks, and we approved it, and sometimes we hit it, sometimes we didn't, and we just moved forward with that goal.
But, uh, but so that, but that's just not meeting a benchmark, that's not changing a benchmark.
Right.
I, I don't think that, do we even necessarily need to vote on the benchmarks?
We don't need to, I think we need to.
I think you're going to trap yourself into a tight corner.
Creating these benchmarks for ourselves.
We don't have to vote, but we should agree on it, you know.
Yeah, no, no, I agree.
So it doesn't have to be sent stone, we just need to, at least, and I can't remember right now, if we approved the goals or not.
Yeah, that's an easy fix, we'll just vote it right now.
Just vote again. I move, we can discuss after we get a second. I move that the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School Committee, um, approve the goals as in, um, the exhibit for our SMART goals, for the three goals that we have of, um, what is it? Ti- creating a team, clarifying our vision, and, um, developing a budget.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So, I guess I'm unclear as how the key action items under goal number two are going to be, are going to happen. Because there's no real. It's not fleshed out enough, I guess, is what I'm saying, so.
So we'll have to.
Like establish forms with various community groups to further partnerships, when, about what? Um, develop communication piece to further community engagement and education, about what? How's it going to be sent out, what's it going to communicate?
Well, I mean, that's something that needs to be flushed out within the, you know, subcommittee, uh, like, I, I have noted that, but that's.
So can we get updates at the next meeting on that piece?
If we are able to meet, I'd happily do it.
Can I ask a question, though, too, about vision, though, it really, i- i- it's going to come out of the strategic blueprint workshops, correct? With the leadership team?
Well, but no, because this goal is about community engagement. And so the workshops have only included us.
Mm-hmm.
So how are we going to engage the community in this process?
Like, the, the title vision is probably a little misleading.
Mm-hmm.
I- i- and while it's a vision-based, it's how do we, you know, the, the actual description of the goal is really, how do we involve the community more in incorporating them in with our vision?
So maybe we can get more in-depth on that and have it just flush that a little bit, just like we need to talk about the budget piece, flush that, you know, this is all kind of prelim, but it's a start as far as working on it.
And did, Michelle, did you mention in a couple of, um, meetings ago that MASC does have guidelines for communicating with the public, with, um, with communities?
Tracy Novak does.
Okay.
A presentation, she probably will do one at the conference on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Matter of fact, I, I'm pretty sure I saw it.
I'll look into it, thank you.
It might have been, it might have been at the one I just had.
Probably has it in her magic bag.
She does have a magic bag of.
I can look, I can look on the website.
So we have to, uh, vote as long as we're just done with the discussion? So all those in favor? That's unanimous. All right, now we're moving on to the MASC resolutions.
Before that.
Before that, we have something else.
Oh, the superintendent's search process. Sorry, scribbled over.
I'm looking for an email here, and I'm having a, the same problem I was having before, that I can't get off of the exhibit. Dr. Kukelber, again, I can't get off of the exhibit, and I push this button. Thanks. So.
Is that what you're looking for, Michelle?
So, we need to, well, I'm looking, well, yeah, that's not what I'm looking for, I'm looking for the, the thing that I got in my email.
Give it back to you.
Yesterday. Yeah, that's not it, though. I need, this is, this is from my email. There it goes, thank you. See, that was the iPad training I was expecting to get the other day.
We need a six-year-old here to help us with the iPad.
Okay, I'm still not finding it. Hmm, I'm not finding what I'm looking for, Benny. All right, I'm not finding it. So hopefully, I can get some assistance with this. So, based on the feedback from the last meeting, I updated a little bit on the Executive Search Consultant Services. So that it would be approved tonight, and we could release it Friday, I think it's Friday, that's the 18th, maybe it's Thursday, with questions being received by the 29th, and all submissions of proposals by November 1st. And then that would give us a November meeting to interview them if we wanted to. And then they could work over the holiday break to put together any sort of a survey and to set up any community meetings that we felt were necessary. So that then we could appoint a superintendent by March 25th, which is a meeting that we have scheduled. We'd be asking them to do a community survey, we would have them posting the notice that we were accepting applications, they would bring in the applications, you know, sort of weed through them, they would be doing our background checks. Hopefully, they would be looking to find the best candidates for us. They would be helping us to set up a screening committee, going to that screening committee, helping them to develop questions. Oftentimes, they will take notes at the screening committee so that then when the screening committee gets together to make their final decisions, they'll have background, you know, they'll have the information they had from the interviews. They will be here to help us during the interviews, to develop our questions, and to schedule the applicants, similar to what the MASC did before, and then, you know, come to the meeting and, you know, as the applicants come and go, deal with that. And then if needed, they would schedule site visits, so if we had a pool of superintendents and we were gonna go visit wherever it is that they are, you know, it'd be fantastic if we could get someone from like, I don't know, Florida to apply. And then.
They'd wanna come here.
Talk about those budget curtailments. So that would be it. We'd be looking for them to submit a letter, letting us know about their history, their experience, how much they would anticipate the cost to be. And then we would have to grade them on that. It's been recommended that we add some information about how we would grade the people, because you can't just pick it on the people that are the nicest, or the best dressed, or the ones who bring the best cookies, or something like that. So we'd have to put down some criteria for that.
One thing I see on here, we're just saying that we're gonna interview the candidates November 13th, and then we'll make a decision no later than 30 days.
Right. That's the candidates that are applying to be the search committee helpers.
Right.
The companies.
The bidders.
The bidders, that's the word.
And then we're, so we're looking for, you're suggesting that we put together a, an additional document on what we're looking for in the hiring process? In how we're choosing?
No. I'm saying, how are we gonna choose the company that is going to help us? From amongst the bidders, because we cannot do it based on just.
Right, so it says November 13th date. We need to have something before then?
No, I think we need to do it tonight, and it needs to be in this.
Is there past information of other criteria, of, is there criteria out there for what other districts have done to hire firms, to fire, hire a superintendent? No?
No, but I think that some of the purchasing requirements have been updated, and we've also been asked in our audit to maybe have that a little more documented. So I think maybe that's why we're looking for this, but.
Are, are these numbering just typos?
Probably, but I don't know what we're talking about.
In the scope of work, one, two, three, four, then there's a couple fives, a couple sixes.
Yes, that would be typos.
Making sure they weren't subsets.
There's three fives, two sixes.
I like five.
So one, one thing that we, one thing that we will need to add is, when you receive the questions, you need to be able to make all the questions and the answers public to all the other bidders at the same time. So usually what happens is that there's a publicly facing website. Right? So you just may wanna, say, questions received by whatever date will be responded to within whatever, and then. Cuz again, the whole point of the procurement process is you gotta make everything free and fair and transparent to everybody at the same time. So you can't give, you can't just answer one person and not respond to the same answer with everybody, right? So, at the very top. So this is a good document, I like it.
So on the 29th, you're recommending that all the questions be posted to the website somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, that's just a suggestion, that's how I've seen it from the state, I don't know how we wanna do it here, I don't know if, you know, Benny, if you're CPA, I don't know if there's a existing process for.
Where this is only $10,000 procurement, there's not.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
If you get over 50, it is.
Yeah, okay, all right, I'll answer that question.
One of my questions is, is do we let Lisa know that she would be someone who would be receiving information? And I just put that there because she's like the HR person, but I certainly, we certainly could put any other human being who would be willing to accept information.
Is this to accept the bid or accept?
I think this is questions. Cuz the bid itself is gonna have to be turned into the district offices, I believe, right?
I don't mind it being me, I don't believe it should be Lisa.
Okay.
I think it should be you, shouldn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Mike, this is a clarifying question, is how this definition of the scope of work, does it act as the benchmarks we're looking for in choosing or hiring? Who we decide on? It, it seems like it's one and the same? But, you know, definitely correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I'm thinking something like, you know, if you were, you know, we're asking for someone who's experienced, right? So someone who has found a super, two or more superintendents in the last four years within a regional school district would be favored over someone who's never worked in a regional school district and has only had one successful superintendent. I don't know, I'm, that's what I'm asking. Do we wanna have a rubric here that we would grade them on?
I'd say yes.
Choose the lowest bidder.
Or are we gonna choose the lowest bidder? And I don't think that's what we want to do.
Price, sorry, price and experience are always the, the way to go, right? Cuz you don't have to choose the lowest bidder, you can use best value, so. I think in terms of a criteria, we can always say price and experience are characteristics being considered, or whatever, but, you know, I mean, Benny, you don't like.
You should really specify what experience you're gonna grade them on. If they have 10 years' experience, it'll get graded more, or if they only have three, or. You should really spell that out, on what, what exactly your criteria is and how you're grading them.
Yep, that's a good point.
I think our biggest issue is that we know who's gonna bid, cuz there's only like five companies that even function to do this in Massachusetts. And we all know that they have experience, so differentiating between them won't be super easy to do, so.
That was my question, cuz I remember you saying earlier, there's not a huge pool.
Yeah, and we've used.
But it's important that we have some sort of criteria, so that in the event that there ever were some question about that, we can be like.
Well, demonstrating knowledge of the North Shore area or regional experience, you know, is a criteria I think would be easy enough to do.
I would think regional would be number one. You think, or?
So I'm looking.
Well, I don't know, but I think, yeah, anyways, you can narrow it down a little more.
Right, and, and I, I would think most of that would be weeded out in the submission requirements, no?
I don't know if you wanna assume that. I don't know if you wanna assume that. I mean, we're also giving, we're giving, in the scope of work, we're, we're kind of defining the timeline, right? Cuz the other criteria that you can always use is your ability to meet the certain deadline, right? And your plan to actually do that. But I think if we're defining certain dates, I don't know if that's really.
Correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there only one date in here, and that's to have a superintendent by March 25th? Yeah, so that's, that's why I'd ask about the November 13th date, everything else is just, it goes from November 13th as being a hard date to the March 25th.
Yeah, I was thinking like, survey, the community members, a, a meeting in January, stuff like that.
Yeah, the consultant will use the findings of the survey to host a community meeting in January. So you would assume that December is gonna be when they do the survey, so that they can host the meeting in January. January meeting being that that's when they're gonna gather the information from the community on what our needs are for a superintendent, so that then they can post a meeting and get applications, so that we can, you know, get a pool, that we can then run through a screening committee during February, and so that we can interview them and have them hired by March. Of course, if you'd like to put this off, so that we would do it more in the April, May timeframe, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the four, five, and six, and the requirements, and. And having certain dates on things will help, cuz that, that could adjust the price of their quote. If you wanted certain things done by next week, they're gonna have to put more people on it, and it's gonna cost them more.
Yep. Well, so another criteria is your ability to meet the submission requirements. That's usually a binary thing, did you meet it, yes or no? Right? That's the first thing. And then, looking at the quote submission requirements on page 78, you know, we're looking for someone who can.
Which one are we looking at?
What number?
On page 78, the quote submission requirements, the set, right? So, you know, criteria is, did you, did you meet all the requirements we want in a bid, in a bid, right? Second one could be your, your experience, right, in the North Shore area doing this. We want a minimum of whatever years, right? I don't know, well, I go.
Wouldn't that be five, though, in the back?
Did it say?
Submittals of community supporting documentation.
Oh, sorry. Right, so if they say that, what, we did it all in Connecticut?
Right.
May not be worth it. If they say, you know, we did everything in North Shore, we did everything in regional districts.
Just didn't ask, oh, we did.
I don't know how, you know, so.
But cuz you're, we're, we're asking for a list of communities supporting documentation.
Right, the smart one's gonna say, regional districts, North Shore, Massachusetts, what are similar population, like, the smart ones will do that. I mean, there's not a big population of bidders to do this, anyway, so, you know.
So do we go back to price and, or?
Well, price should always be a thing, doesn't mean that's the only factor you do, right? The other one would be quality of your plan, right? Cuz if you look at number four, at the very bottom of page 78, we're asking them to do a timeline, a search process plan, their approach to sharing community involvement and input. So I don't know how you measure that in a scale of one to five, but, you know, we wanna make sure that they're not just gonna say, we're gonna do a Survey Monkey. Like, is that sufficient for us? I don't know. Do you wanna actually go walk a neighborhood? Do we want to, you know, they're gonna approach town administrators? You know, the has, that's, that's what I mean, like, the depth of what they wanna do is gonna tell us, and I don't know, right?
But that's, that's what number four is asking, though. I, I think, what I'm saying is, I really think that you did a great job.
What I'm trying to fill out is sort of like, how are we gonna make a determination of, you know, bidder A, bidder B? If prices are all the same, what's the better one to go? You can't just sort of say, be like bidder A because the colors are better, right? You have to be able to justify why you chose bidder A in the, in the price is the same. We chose bidder A because they, they have experience in the regional district, in regional districts, they provided a well-thought-out plan, we, you know, their approach to community feedback was robust, and, and within our vision, met the timeline, you know? Cuz you want, basically, you wanna be able to say, again, I don't know how contentious this is gonna be, but you wanna be able to justify the reason why you did it. That's ultimately what you're trying to get to. So if you think about that, the reasons why we chose, you work backwards and sort of say, this is how we're gonna measure these bids, right?
Right.
It's, it's different, because again, it's not a, it's not a pure open population, right? It's not, we're not gonna get Bain and Company and, and, you know.
No, we're not.
Monitor to come, to come in and do this consulting thing.
No, we're not.
Yeah, MASC and a couple other ones, right? But we have to at least go through the process, cuz it's required by law.
So how do we wanna go?
Um, do you want me to just work with Benny and do the wording, and then we issue it out on Friday? Or do you have recommendations?
I think that's great.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. I'm abso, I'm fine with that, cuz I really think this is great and hits 98% of what we're looking for. So thank you, Michelle.
Probably should have a motion on that. I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accepts the Executive Search Consultant Services position. Our cue for Michelle and Benny to work on the, the details, but that should go forward with what we have talked about.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just, are you okay with that, Benny?
Of course.
Okay.
Did you get the motion, Benny? Great. All right, all those in favor? Michelle, again, thank you very much for doing.
Thank you, Michelle, for doing all this one.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right, now, voting on the MASC resolutions. How do we wanna go about?
I think Stacy should go. The Hamilton Wyndham School Committee votes to appro, to support Resolution 1, and then we debate it, and then we do, yea, 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 or. We could just approve them all.
Can it just go in order, and we can go with that?
Go for it.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee vote to approve Resolution 1.
Support.
Support Resolution 1 banning polystyrene from schools.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, Julie, have you spoken with Catherine Donovan? I'm just wondering how this would impact her. Just, and cost-wise, and, I mean, I'm all for it, but I'm just wondering what the impact, okay? I know this is where we're going, we should be going, but I was just wondering what Catherine.
Some of this basically is, we're supporting this, and when we go to the MASC, and there's a whole bunch of other, however many school, school districts are supporting these resolutions or not. Then it gets the final vote when you get to there.
Right, but we wanna see if there's a direct impact on our.
But I just wanna know what Catherine thinks about this, just, cuz it does impact the bottom line.
I apologize, I didn't inquire about it ahead of time, but I will certainly check in with her before we go to the conference.
It's, it's coming down the pipe, so that's something that, you know, will impact your budget. It's, it's coming down the pipe, so that's something that, you know, will impact your budget, potentially, to our budget.
Typically, if we're using, um, materials that can be reused, it's more cost-effective over the long run.
Yep.
So I don't know how many.
I can't really think of anything, and then. Well, the trays used to be, but now they're paper.
Recycle paper or something.
They used to be the polystyrene.
Thomas, do you know, do you see?
The trays are paper, they're recyclable, as far as, I don't think there's much, like.
Like styrofoams, do you think?
No, I can't think of anything we use that's styrofoam.
Not me either.
Yeah, I, I've only seen plastic bottles we recycle.
They get thrown away, but.
Yeah, they get thrown away.
Lots of hydro flasks.
Oh, yeah.
Those dent.
Um, all right, then, all those in favor?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee, um, what was I saying?
Support.
Support, support Resolution Two pertaining to educator diversity and professional licensure.
Can I get a second?
Second.
So what's funny is, I was literally just talking about this today, and how sometimes experience does not equal being able to pass an EMTIL.
Yeah, but this is caused, this is to eliminate the EMTIL and the MA Performance Assessment for Leaders licensing requirements.
And it's also to put a teacher, right, a profess, teaching professional on the board, correct?
Yeah, but.
Because I think right now, they're saying there's no, there's no teaching professional on the board.
Yeah, so right here, it's the, um, second to last one on the bottom of the page. It's the only professional trade in Massachusetts where the holders of a license are prohibited from serving on its governing board.
Which seems ridiculous.
Uh-huh, all those in favor? I'm sorry, did we have a chance to discuss? Do we do that again, what's that? Do we have a chance to discuss? Yeah, definitely, I'm sorry, Peter. What is this, whereas practicing educators and school committee members are prohibited from serving on the board of, okay.
On the Board of Education, I think, yeah.
Okay, sorry, go ahead. Sorry, this is just slowing down my world domination. Um, all those in favor? Michelle, you have your hand up, right?
No, I did not.
So, opposed? Abstain?
Abstain, abstaining.
Five and, five, one, one.
Move that the, Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee, um, accept, or move for, support, I'm having problems with this. Support the school transportation, Resolution Number Three.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is absolutely needed, we need this.
Yeah, I feel like this is pretty popular.
Yeah. I'm just wondering how much, um, sway or power they'll have over local companies? I mean, I, I remember Jeff saying.
Well, there's talk that maybe there's some agreements that, you know? You only bid in certain areas, because that's where your expertise is.
I know, so how can, how can the?
Because that's a violation of antitrust laws.
How, but.
Well, you need more information to see if that's really happening or not. Maybe it's not happening, maybe it's just good business practice to work in the area where you have expertise. Maybe it's not.
Well, I mean, the, the, the part of the resolution is to eliminate MGL Chapter Seventy-One, Section Seventy-C, right? Which would be the school district or regional transportation authorities to collaborate on plans to provide safe and efficient transportation alternatives.
Right.
That lessen the financial impact on both the district and the Commonwealth.
Right.
Like, that really says nothing.
So, the school district where I am, there is a bus that's provided by a regional transportation, because it just happens to be a stop. But that regional transportation service could just as easily provide all the transportation, if it was allowed under the law, but it's not.
Yeah.
It wouldn't help us, because we don't have a regional transportation service here.
So, it's basically allowing a public, public municipal bus authority to provide student, oh, okay, I get it.
To bid on and provide student transportation.
Oh, yeah, I can, I can get behind that.
Jean's on board. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining?
Okay, abstaining.
I move, that's the, yeah. I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee support Resolution Four, climate change.
Second. You get a second? Yes, thanks, Peter. Any discussion?
I mean, why wouldn't you advocate for funding for school infrastructure needed for, for emergency funding and disasters? You know, if it's being caused by climate change, I don't know, but, why wouldn't you advocate for that?
I know, I just don't know if I like the wording, the way it's, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, climate change.
Oh, yeah, I gotta go with, yeah, I don't know, so.
No, that's part of it.
No, that goes into, that's under number five, isn't it?
No.
Oh, that is in there, okay.
Yeah.
Why not?
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Five, oh, one, one, again.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee support Resolution Five, full funding of transportation costs for students in foster care and state care.
Second.
Any discussion?
I mean, this isn't covered under McKentley-Vento or whatever?
Not full funding.
Oh, yeah, subject to appropriation, right? Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? unanimous?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee support Resolution Six, universal quality pre-kindergarten access in Massachusetts.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Forty-two, motion passes.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee support Resolution Seven, poverty in children.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I just want to see who it's submitted by, I can't remember.
Framingham.
By Framingham School Committee.
Yeah, but it looks like it passed before in two thousand and fifteen.
Oh, yeah, it's re, reformation.
So what does that mean?
Just means that it passed before.
But nothing really has.
But they just want to be sure everybody still agrees. It's kind of a political move to remind people about things.
All right, uh, all those in favor? Unanimous?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee support Resolution Eight, Resolution for Access to Menstrual Supplies.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee support Resolution Nine, charter school reform.
Second.
Any discussion?
It should just be noted, this was submitted by the MASC Board of Directors, so, I think, you know, they're trying to find ways to mitigate the costs to public schools. System, public school systems.
Oh, also, school boards have no say over charter.
Yeah, they have no say.
That's right, but yet they have to pay and get declining reimbursement.
And they get to keep twenty percent of their operating budget in reserve funds.
Versus five. Versus five percent.
What was the rationale behind that? I just, anybody know?
I don't know, who knows?
Probably earmarked for growth.
Just in case.
I would think.
Well, not only that, but there, a lot of ti, maybe it has to do with endowments, too, I don't know.
Enrollment, maybe, maybe it's two.
Yeah, don't know.
Well, most charter schools every year are trying to add more people.
Yeah, we don't know, but, seems a little disproportionate.
All right, uh, all those in favor? That's unanimous.
And what about the bylaws?
Opposing them in the MASC bylaws.
How should we do the bylaws?
Oh, um, I move that the, um, I'm, yeah, I was just trying to look at the three, just to see how I want to word it. I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee support the proposal to amend the Mas, MASC bylaws.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, uh, up next, we're actually, um, putting a vote to the action pertaining to Long Meadow. So can we get a motion?
We're gonna have to table this, because we did not discuss it, because we do not have our subcommittee meeting last night. So we'll have to wait until next, uh.
Why, I don't understand why this is back in subcommittee. Because we already had this discussion at the table.
Do we have something here to vote on? Do we, did we have a read ahead or anything to vote on?
This is, this is back on the table, because it was felt that our discussion saying that we weren't going, going to move forward wasn't an official vote, and that it should be voted on officially.
But I don't think we should vote on this before we even have, um, a capital plan, before we have all the information in front of us. And we don't have, we have not gone our capital plan, and that will be coming on the twenty-fourth.
Uh, I'm really not interested in tabling this, at this point, I.
Well, Stacy, did you make a motion?
No. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to vote on whether or not we feel that this should go back to subcommittee.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee assign this to the, whatever that, capital planning committee for a recommendation by our next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Three opposed. Three. The motion doesn't move forward, which leaves us right back where we started.
So, I'm gonna ask this question again, is there a motion that's been prepared and ready, because I did not see one in the packet?
So, no, not that I know of.
Okay.
It was brought up at the last meeting, that we never actually made an official motion. So, it was my understanding that this was, this was just some housekeeping.
So someone can make a different motion?
I'm sorry?
I said somebody could make a different motion?
I mean, I know it was recommended we don't pursue it, I never heard why we didn't, but I trust Jean and Michelle's opinion. You were on this, Michelle, were you part of it as well, the discussion? Yeah, I trust your opinions, that, I never heard the official reason why we're not moving forward, I just, no, it was recommended that we didn't. I trust your opinion. And you don't have to share it now. I believe we discussed the timeframe on the two sellers were very far apart, and weren't feasible by the district. I am really, going off the top of my head here. That's all right, that's all right.
Well, from their, the, um, I, I don't have my notes out here, honestly, but I do know, I do remember that one of the, uh, there was a timeframe, there was a short timeframe in which to be able to secure, uh, one of the properties. The timeframe was very compressed, and we would not be able to meet it under any best, under good circumstances. The owner of the other properties also wanted to reside in the properties until, for a number of years, even after the, um, even after it was sold. Um, he also was planning on putting deed restrictions, if he did sell them, that would prevent the district from, um, doing what we would want to do onto the properties. So, um, it just seemed like a situation that would not be in the district's best interest to pursue.
Makes sense.
Given time, money, and.
Restrictions.
Lack of flexibility in what we really wanted to do, so, I mean, there was no real, the pathway moving forward was narrowed considerably. And, given the other needs that we have, you know, we had to prioritize, and Long Meadow unfortunately was not on the table.
We have received an email communication about an alternative plan there, which has not been discussed, so, are we not gonna pursue that either?
For all three properties, or the number?
There's been a recommendation about leasing, so, by no action, so we're not gonna consider that either?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. We, at the capital improvement plan, we made that decision, um, not to pursue that.
Okay.
It didn't make sense, because we don't have the, he doesn't have the rights to the road, um, and there's no access to the property other than through the first owner's, um, property, and he's not giving us any rights to that.
And there's a, there's a property in between the road, there's a, a small parcel of property in between the road and the school, and then that's.
I know, but there's no direct access from the school, but can't you go out to the road and up the road?
It's a private road.
It's a private road, and we, and the first, um, Long Meadow number one does not have rights to that, access to that.
Have no easement to it, how do they access it, then?
I think from the agreement from property owner three and five. He has the rights to that road.
I'm just surprised this didn't come up when.
On the property where I live, right, there is a driveway in front of my door. I own the land, but the people who live behind me have the right to use the road to access their property. So are you saying that whatever that front property is, has no rights whatsoever to access their property?
I believe that's what was discussed, I'd have to look back again at the notes.
So, all right, so why do we have to vote tonight if there's questions? Is there a reason we have to vote tonight? I don't understand.
Is there a reason why we need to know?
To keep it open. I mean, it's just spinning our wheels.
I mean, we, I, I'd rather, honestly, I'd rather, like, focus on what we know is, like, is a real need. We have an operating budget, we have capital needs, we have OPEB, it's like, you know, I don't have that much time, you know, even to give, and I don't have much time left on the bo, on this committee, and I'd rather just focus and address what we know is gonna need, be needed for this town meeting, honestly. I mean, that's, maybe sounds selfish, but that's.
Well, and also, unfortunately, it was led to believe that the negotiation could have been solved by this last summer, and then the owner got very frustrated, saying the way things were going, that it wasn't gonna happen before he died, is how he felt. And he did not want to leave.
He was right about that?
Well, and he literally said, unless you can come up with the money in the next five months, there's no way this is gonna happen. And we couldn't, that was two months ago, so there was no way that we were gonna be able to meet the demands of what he was asking.
So we need a vote to take no action?
Apparently.
But, it's take no action now, right? We can't commit to take no action ever. But it's take no action now, right? We can't commit to take no action ever.
I thought this is dead, I thought this is dead in the water.
Not doing anything is also doing something.
It's just no action.
All right.
We can take a vote for no action.
No longer pursuing it? Is that what it is? We're voting that?
It's just a vote for no action.
Okay, that's a weird vote.
It'd go away on its own timeline, right? Because we will have missed certain, certain normal courses, you know, you've all bought houses, I'm sure. It's like you gotta meet certain timelines. If you don't meet those timelines, the deal's done. You don't have an opportunity. We could just let it lie. And it would run a course. I mean, I don't know if we. I mean, that's, again, taking no action is.
Let the play clock wind down.
We're deliberately not pursuing it either way.
If it comes back up in the future, that's a different conversation.
Right. So.
So can I get a motion on taking no action at this time?
I believe our last vote was basically no action where.
We didn't have a vote. That's why we're having this conversation.
I've moved that we take no action on the Long Meadow property.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? All right, donation to the High School Robotics Club.
I move that the Hamilton Wannam Regional School Committee accept the money, donations received for, in the amount of $2,350 for the robotics club. Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you, all the donations.
All right, so now we're looking at the renewal of the eighth grade boys hockey co-op with Marblehead. Craig sort of briefly touched on how our co-ops work when he met with us last time. So. Why don't we make a motion then have a new discussion if we need to add a motion?
I move that the Hamilton Wannam Regional School Committee renew the eighth grade boys hockey co-op with Marblehead.
Second.
Any discussion?
So this is a middle school program?
I was actually just gonna ask to say a thing. Is it JV or is it, is that a middle school?
It's not, it's not high school. I've, I've, I don't, I've never.
This is new, it seems.
Well, it's saying renewal.
It's a renewal.
What?
It's, it's a renewal.
Saying renewal.
I don't ever remember this being approved before.
I don't remember.
And it is, I thought that it, do we have to approve it or just Marblehead? I thought just the sponsoring group had to.
So that's one thing that Craig discussed last week.
Yeah, but I didn't remember.
That they have.
Yeah, but we were the sponsor of that one. Oh, but, but we also approved, in which we were not.
But what I'm confused about is that that was for high school. This is, this is middle school, which doesn't, when it, because we don't have the same principal. If we had the same principal for middle school, high school, then the athletics, I'm just confused about this.
I think they'd be playing JV.
No.
No.
No, because we would, then we would have to approve eighth graders to play on a high school team, and we have not been asked to do that. Because I would vote against that.
Yeah.
Maybe not in hockey, but.
Maybe in women's hockey we did.
I know we approved eighth grade for basketball, girls' basketball.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, we have approved eighth graders to play in high school teams before. I probably voted no though.
Yeah, I'm just, I would, I would think that we would want the eighth graders on our high school hockey team. So I.
So it says that the, the inclusion of eighth graders would lessen the cost for families, but the district cost remains the same.
I believe it might just be girls, because we have a co-op with Marblehead girls, but our boys hockey team is Hamilton Wannam.
For eighth grade as well?
They, we have to approve it, but they have allowed eighth graders to play up.
But this doesn't, this says that it's a co-op with Marblehead.
Yeah, which is not our own team.
So then this isn't right, so that we shouldn't approve this until we know what.
It says boys and girls hockey at Marblehead.
I'm afraid of not approving it because usually these are time sensitive.
Well, is hockey a winter sport or is?
It is a winter sport, but it's starting right now.
No, it's not. The registration just came out today. The registration, or maybe it was yesterday, just came out today.
Yeah, I just got an email yesterday.
So the deadline isn't for a while.
Yeah. So I think we need more information on this to make sure it's accurate.
Yeah, we don't know if this is a middle school program or a high school program. And if it's a high school program.
It's to include eighth graders in the high school program.
But this doesn't make sense that it's a co-op with Marblehead.
So is this?
For the boys. It doesn't say that they're going to high school to.
So is this a renewal of a co-op or is this to allow them to play at the high school level? Because that also requires our approval.
We need both approvals. We don't have this information.
Yeah, I don't know if they played last year or not.
So I think we need to come back with this. Because I do know for a fact that the registration just came out.
Yeah, we got the email yesterday.
So if we come back to it, the next meeting will be November sixth.
So the registration just came out, but again, they're putting the team together, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but the, the season doesn't even start till after Thanksgiving.
Fund a team.
Not even sure if it starts before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm also looking at baseball.
So let's vote on something we don't know what we're voting on or what the, or what the information is. Let's do that.
Do we, wait, do we have, so we don't have any information if the boys co-op with Marblehead? That, that just.
Yeah, we need to start getting information on this stuff. That would be great.
But if we vote no today, will that?
We could not vote at all.
No, but would it have a, if, yeah, would it have a chilling effect on registration, pun intended?
It would probably not be able to run the teams. If they're asking for eighth grade players, they need the players to, to actually run the teams.
But we don't know that. We're, we're making speculations on no information being provided.
There's no information at all as an exhibit at all to know what this is at all.
I mean, we don't even have an email. We don't have anything here, no form, no nothing. We don't even have the application that might have been submitted to Marblehead. I mean, we've got no information here. We don't even know what we're voting on.
The application isn't, my understanding is that the application isn't submitted until after school committee approves.
We needed at least information.
I apologize. I thought it was asked to be a renewal, so I assumed that you all would know what you, what was done in the past.
No, because this was the boy, this eighth grade, we've never done this co-op with hockey approval.
Yeah, my apologies.
That's okay. I mean, I, I said, most likely it's girls and not boys, but we do need. Why would we go with Marblehead boys when we have a boys team?
Our next meeting is November sixth, and that's not too late.
Yeah, and here it says, on the email about sports registration, it says, "Boys' ice hockey includes eighth graders." It doesn't say anything about Marblehead. And then for the registration for the girls, it says, "Girls' ice hockey, Marblehead includes eighth graders." So we're not just approving the co-op, we're also approving eighth graders to play on a high school team. So we don't even have everything here we need to approve in order for this to happen.
Can I, again?
Assuming that what's in the email is right.
Right. I, I, I think there's a typo. Do we have, and again, it's, we'll probably have to table this to next meeting, but there probably is some information from last year's request for renewal for the boys to our high school, for eighth graders to play up. And girls to play Marblehead. Do we have?
Access the minutes from last October around this time.
Yes. Yep.
Looking up on my.
Because I don't have it.
So this was from Patricia Field. She sent it to. All winter sports.
Sends out for sports for registration.
Right? No, they don't, you don't get a price until you've already said you're gonna play.
And that's new the last year, which is good. I mean.
I can't, I don't have the date.
It doesn't say when it's due, which is always one of my gripes.
But from his assistant. He sends it out all the time for all the sports.
Yes. In the last nine years.
And what's today?
I'm nervous it's gonna tank both these teams.
No, it won't tank, it will not tank both these teams. Came out on Tuesday, and the kids are supposed to go to a meeting tomorrow.
And that's, they've known about it because the coaches have reached out to all the players. So they know about it.
My son's a player. No reach out, so.
It's up to the coaches. And the kids talk in school too, so they, they know about it. This is for more parental information. But I would like to see if we could get some information, because I think that is a typo. It should be eighth grade boys to our high school team. And girls to co-op with Marblehead, to play with the high school team.
Inaccurate summation.
Yes.
So how do we confirm that though?
Can we get a confirmation tonight or?
I emailed the athletic director. If he would like me to step out and make a phone call, I'm happy to do that.
That would be great.
You can move it down.
At least find out if we could table the discussion till next time, and he can come, or if it's something that has to happen tonight. If it, if it can wait till next.
It won't be until November sixth.
That's what I'm saying. So if we can wait till then, then that's fine, if we need to put him on speakerphone then.
All right, so should we do something else then?
So, yeah, let's guess what you would do with.
Chair's report?
Want to do the chair report?
I have nothing. I had something and I forgot what it was at this point. Let's do the consent agenda.
We can do the policy committee.
Oh, yeah, we can do that also.
Or cap, and capital planning, we don't, we can just, we don't.
We have a meeting on the 24th, so.
There's the update.
All right, that's.
Do we want to do policy?
Sure. Second reading of policy, section B.
I move that the Hamilton Wannam Regional School Committee accept the second reading of policy section B.
In form.
In form.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Or did someone second it?
Michelle had a second.
Okay. All right, so in form means that we are approving them now, but they don't actually come into effect until we get them all sort of done. Because it, we're having a little bit of a question about how we get things updated. So if we approve it in form, like it's ready to be the policy, but it doesn't get enacted today. It gets enacted in the future.
What, what's the problem?
If you approve it now, it becomes the policy. We have no, in order to do that, that would require Dr. Kukunberger to go through and update our entire policy online each time we approve these. Even though the goal is to migrate them to the MASC, because that's how we're paying for that. But we can't do that until we've approved the entire policy manual. So we can.
Wait, so this, so these aren't gonna be updated on the web and for like two years?
Well, no, because we're actually meeting on a regular basis and going through them quite rapidly.
Well, this is B, right?
Right, and we've already done A this year and B, and we're ready to do C and possibly E at the next meeting. So we're actually meeting as a working group and getting our work done.
So you have, you have the copies of it, or you have the hard copy of it, but it won't be online updated until it's all done.
And part of that's because some of the policies are being moved from one section to another, and we're recoding the sections to align with MASC's coding. And so it would be, you'd have like policies in two places and/or they'd be coded.
But if we had, if a student had an issue, a parent had an issue, we would have the heart, what Michelle's been working on the policy in-house to say, here it is.
No, because the policy, when you're, you're adopting it in its form, it can't be enacted or implemented until you approve it fully, and you'll do that with the whole manual.
It's because we have a contract with the MASC for three years. This is supposed to be a three-year process. If we had one specific policy that needed to be updated, of course, we would update that one policy, but we're talking about hundreds of policies, which would be an incredible undertaking to do in the superintendent's office when we're actually paying the MASC to do it. But to do it double doesn't make any sense.
Any other discussion?
Thank you for explaining that.
All those in favor? So opposed? That's five to one. Going back, did you get an answer?
I did. So my apologies for the typo on the agenda. It is renewal of the eighth grade boys on our hockey team. And then, well, so that's the first one, renewal of our eighth grade boys to play on our hockey team. And that has to be done annually.
Yep.
Yep.
And what about the girls' hockey? Is that a renewal or something?
I think we should do them one at a time.
So it's the Marblehead eighth graders playing on our team?
No.
No.
It's our eighth graders playing on our high school team.
On our high school team.
So the recommendation would be to renew the, renew the waiver to allow our eighth grade boys to play on Hamilton Wannam Regional School District hockey team.
I move that the Hamilton Wannam Regional School Committee approve the renewal of the eighth grade boys to play on the hockey team.
Second.
The high school hockey team.
And is there just a varsity team or is there a varsity?
No, it's junior varsity.
JV too.
Any other discussion?
Can I just say that my son is a hockey player, and having eighth graders play on JV is developmentally sound, and it's safe, and it's great for their experience.
Always play up.
All those in favor?
We just need a little clarification.
The recommendation is to, the renewal of the eighth grade girls' hockey co-op with Marblehead. Our co-op is actually a two-year agreement, but annually you have to renew for the eighth grade girls to play up.
I move that the Hamilton Wannam Regional School Committee approve the renewal of the eighth grade girls' hockey to play with Marblehead or with the co-op with Marblehead, and Marblehead hosting.
Second.
Any discussion?
So it's, we're approving eighth graders to play at Marblehead.
Yes.
JV or varsity?
JV.
I wonder if.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you would think, especially if it's a co-op, that they're looking for the JV. But, I mean, yeah, I would be curious as to say that because, you know, there are 16-year-old pros in hockey, right? It's, it's a very unique sport like that, that just the cream rises and it can be very, ages and really, yeah.
I don't believe there are any girls playing professional hockey.
So, in, you're Massachusetts? Are you serious?
She said professional.
There's, don't believe there are any girls playing professional hockey. In the NHL.
Not in the NHL, no. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining?
I'll go for opposed.
Opposed? So five to one. All right, the superintendent's report.
So I wanted to share with you tonight a little bit about the process. Again, this feels a little premature to share with the full committee because I'd like to vet it with the capital committee first, but just to give you a general sense, we rolled out the process with our leadership team. We have some key benchmark actions and collaborations that we'll have together. The first starts on Tuesday, looking at personnel and enrollment. Given that personnel is the largest portion of our budget, this is also a chance for us to think about, do we have any known retirements? Are there any non-professional staff that need additional support? How are we growing those folks? Making sure that we're adhering to our evaluation timelines, and then studying the enrollment projections and the implications that may have on class sizes or the number of FTEs needed at each grade level. We're also looking. We're also looking at, um, expanding our partnerships with local universities and colleges, so that we can access more fellowship, fellows, through their fellowship programs. And so we have a guest coming from Salem State to talk with leadership in early November. We all have a relationship with Endicott, so we're looking to amplify that if, um, if there are any vacancies that become available. And that's really a win-win for us when we think about, um, TA positions. Sometimes those are hard to fill, in some cases, we're still filling, um, TA positions. And so it's an opportunity for us to, at a significant cost savings to the district, to be able to test drive people who are already, oftentimes, they have their certification in education, and they're just working on an accelerated master's program. Um, and we can target specific areas of need, like say, special education or English language learners. Um, and so we're learning more about that and trying to see if we can maximize those partnerships. We then will also go through a new investment proposal process, where all, um, principals and directors will have the opportunity to present new investments that they would like to make. Um, and they're also asked to think about how that new investment might be funded. And so in some cases, it might be additional costs to the district to fill a, a specific need. And other ways, they might be thinking about reallocation or resource realignment. So it's really a chance to invite them to be innovative and creative around what the needs of our students are, and how they think is, we might best meet those needs. Kind of parallel with that proposal process, the, so principals and directors will prepare those proposals individually, and then they will present them to their colleagues together as a P, a pre-K through twelve group. Um, each principal and/or director will present what they're asking for, they'll rank that in terms of required, high, mid, low. Um, and then after we hear all of the proposals, we'll come back to it as a leadership team and say, now that we hear the district context and need, how does that change our prioritization? And that will be really important information for Vinnie and I, as we're developing the budget. And then right after that, and starting on November 12th, we will be, um, having one-on-one, Vinnie and I, one-on-one meetings and inviting Stacy and Peggy, our Director of Curriculum, to join us for certain parts of the conversations. One-on-one meetings with each principal and director to look at their level service budget. And that's where, you know, that worksheet I described earlier really becomes expanded, and we look at what was budgeted in FY17, what was actual FY18, budgeted actual 19, budgeted actual 20, budgeted to date, what, um, cost savings measures have been implemented through the curtailment, and then what's their proposal, and including justification. And I think for our principals and our directors, this part will feel really new and different in the process, because as we've talked through the curtailment process, there hasn't been a lot of expl- understanding of necessarily what all those budget numbers, numbers in their budgets represent, or how they were developed. So it's really opening, um, the process transparently and collaboratively with all of our leaders. And I think it's gonna be, um, a really rewarding process, but very time-consuming. So Vinnie and I will be behind closed doors for two solid weeks, um, working with our colleagues on that. Simultaneously, we'll be developing the capital budget, so you, uh, the Capital Financial Planning Committee will have an updated, um, capital improvement plan that is prioritized in a variety of, in two different ways. And then, um, from there, we'll decide what is actually going to go into the budget this year. And then, the big culmination that we're hoping for, and we'll go back to the leadership team and think about, um, other ways to do it, is to have that workshop time with you, so that you're really informed, you're hearing directly from the leadership team on how the process has worked, um, and answering any questions that you may have. That way, you too can go out into the community and be ambassadors of what's in the budget, um, and also what's not, because I think it's really important for our community to understand, um, what our unmet needs are as well. So I just wanted to put that out there, because it's starting on Tuesday. Happy to flesh it out more further, um, with the Capital Planning Committee. We also, um, have two documents that we're using, that I'll share with the Capital and Financial Planning Committee when we meet next week. One is like a calendar, and then the other one's just sort of like a running list of all the key dates. One other thing that we're adding to the process with more, I'm anticipating more opportunities to come, is a joint finance meeting, um, with both of our town, our town administrator and our town manager, and they're inviting folks from their Boards of Select Person and, um, FinComs. I've also invited the Capital Financial Planning Committee to be there, and of course, it'll be a meeting in public, it'll happen in here. The school district will facilitate that conversation, and it's really, you know, the, the agenda is exactly what you would probably expect, establishing some norms for how we wanna work together, um, setting some goals for how we're going to look at the budget this year, and then, um, scheduling some additional meeting dates. So, our hope is that we'd be able to have three to four, um, if not more, touchpoints leading up to the town meeting, so that everybody's really informed, and we're taking in the broader context of our community, not just thinking about the school district's needs in isolation. So more to come on that, but just wanted to give you a sneak peek.
Do you have the first date for that?
It is October 29th, and I believe the time is 7:00 PM here in Buick.
And who's in charge of doing the budgeting, and even if this may not even, for the early childhood partners, grant person, and for the preschool? Is that, who manages that?
Stacy.
So Stacy's in charge of all of that? Okay.
So, that's it, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. That sounds great, actually, I think it'll be really helpful to have the town officials be involved early, and often.
Yes.
I agree.
I know, I had forwarded the information per year request, and they were very excited.
Great.
So, but then I also, Alex, sorry, I'm pointing him out, um, emailed me back, he said, oh, I'm looping in, because now Hamilton Wyndham FinComs are working together. So he looped them in.
Yeah, they invited us into that conversation months ago. It's the, uh, um, capital committee.
No, this is not.
No.
I'm FinComs, working together, Hamilton Wyndham.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of energy, um, just in the conversations we've been having with, um, our town manager and our town administrator, to really kind of reset the story, reset the narrative, and work collaboratively, um, and build those relationships, because, I mean, we're only, we're stronger together, and so I think that, I feel really.
I think that was a bumper sticker I saw, stronger together, yeah, I think I saw that somewhere.
Just kidding, later, I'm getting sleepy. Can, can we have Vinnie, uh, your presentation on the, um, FY budget to give to, um, the FinCom? They weren't able to be here tonight for Hamilton, because they had their own meeting, and he did request some information, so he can look at it. He was scared. Yeah, okay, great, so then I can.
We'll post it on our website, too.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, can you show us that, um, presentation you did tonight to us?
Yep, post it where, on the website?
So it'll be posted with the meeting packet.
Oh, okay.
Um, but we'll also, we want, one of the things that we're hoping to talk with the Joint Finance Group about is creating like a budget portal, where we can put all of these things in one spot, so it's like a one-stop shop for our community to access.
Be nice if they put theirs there, too, that would be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good idea, like that.
There are constraints, too, so we can see it.
All right, uh, moving on, the consent agenda. Need a motion?
I just have one thing to pull out, the September 18th meeting minutes.
Which is, where's the typo?
Yeah, those are the only minutes, so that's the one.
That's the one, okay.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the consent agenda for warrants, and, um...
I get a second?
No.
Second, sorry.
Any discussion?
I just have, um, one question, and that I noticed on the minutes. On page 132, for the eighth grade field trip to Washington DC, it has Principal Craig Hubby striked out. And I'm just wondering why that was, because if you go, the Booster Fund Assistant Soccer Coach, which was athletic director Craig Genualdo, I just was wondering, do we wanna keep it with names on it? Or why it got struck out? I'm just curious.
That was because it was listed in the agenda that way, but, um, he didn't end up showing up to the meeting.
Okay.
And I just have, there's a small typo on page 136. Line item 10, it says vote to adjourn at 9:00 PM, but then the motion says 10:00 PM.
Right, and that, that's also kept as the agenda, like, that's the plan, is to adjourn at.
Oh, is that how it works?
And then he didn't vote, or you didn't, you asked him to vote ahead.
Oh, is that how it works? Okay, sorry. No, I don't know how it works. I just... Oh, so the agenda item said 9:00 PM, but we didn't leave till 10:00.
Right, right.
Um, hip to your rapper.
I move to amend.
So we already, uh, made the motion, now we just need a vote on the voucher, and then we need to make another motion for the, um, minutes. So all those in favor? Warrants? And now this is another.
I move to amend, to adj- uh, add to the consent agenda that September 18th minutes.
Second?
Uh, I just wanna say that maybe in the future, when you just have a question like that, we bring that up in discussion, and then if we can make the amendment to pull those out.
Usually, in the consent agenda, it says you can't make, you can't have a discussion, so that's why I did it, you have to do it ahead. You can't do in a consent agenda, you can't have a discussion afterwards. That's why I did it the way I did. If it wasn't a consent agenda, then you can't have a discussion.
Second?
All right, uh, all those in favor? Topics for the next meeting?
Well, we're gonna have enrollment? Probably.
And, I was just wondering, are we gonna have, um, I know a while ago, we had asked about Stacy Busek, um, talking about some, I mean, it was almost a year ago that we kind of had asked, well, in January, I believe it was, had some questions with Stacy, just with some of, um, um, concerns, and I know we talked about it again out of this replacement, I think, if she was gonna come soon, if we can.
Yeah, I think our challenge is trying to fit it all in.
Yeah.
Um, because we also have, will have a capital planning, um, a capital improvement plan presentation from Tom Geary. So we'll look at that and see, maybe we bump Stacy up, and then do the capital improvement plan presentation in the first meeting in December or something. But, we'll figure it out.
Okay, and then also, if we could just ma- um, make sure that we have all exhibits included, too, that would be awesome, so we can read ahead, even just like the budget forecast, too, just have some information. That would be great.
So, um, that's a good clarifying point. I thought we had discussed this at one point, but maybe not. Presentations, often staff is working on the presentation, like right up to the day, just refining it, and that was much the case with this, because we were, we wanted to vet it through leadership and cabinet before we shared it. So, can we just have an agreement, supporting documents maybe in advance, but presentations, I think, are easy to be like misinterpreted out of context, because oftentimes, the slides are supported by what folks are saying, because we're not like creating slides that we're just reading, but I am happy to do what the will of the committee is.
But if we could have it even in our packet, because it wasn't included in our packet.
I did?
Yeah, it wasn't in our packet, yeah, in this packet, we've always had the material ahead, whether, and, I mean, I know with budget stuff, we always had it the Friday before, and I know it's fluid, but we've always had that information the Friday before our meeting, or we've asked for it, I should say, not always had it, but we've asked for it. And I know it's fluid, but we can just still read ahead.
Quick question, I'm, November 6th is our next meeting, right, the first? Does it, or November, November 6th is our first meeting, our next meeting? That's the conference? Will you be here? Julie?
That is the Wednesday of the MASC, so if you're going down the first night, you won't be here.
Well, I didn't think about that.
Well, there are.
It's happened actually in the past, so it depends on how many.
There are five Wednesdays in November, or in October, so if you wanted to meet in two weeks, we could do that, and then skip that week.
I'm not available on the 30th, that's Halloween in our community, and so.
What?
Yeah, weird, but true, I just learned that the other day.
I'm sorry, what happens on the?
They have Halloween on the 30th, because, I could get it if it was a Saturday, but it's a Wednesday.
So the parents can go trick-or-treating on the 31st.
You already have a really good costume, right? Well, I'm sure you do.
Mostly just a.
Super fun.
Almost six-year-old little girl who will be heavily disappointed.
Yeah, you can't do that.
Excuse me, so the both of you are gonna be gone on the 6th?
Well, the leadership team is planning a workshop on that day, which I know is gonna be fantastic.
On November 6th.
November 6th, like the second part of, um, the strategic blueprint that we've started. Confident that the leadership team can handle that in my absence, but, um, also happy to reschedule.
So you guys could work on an agenda that could be set up, that it's that, Vinnie presents the enrollment, probably, and, you know, maybe we do the first reading of a policy section, because then we can cover things that you don't necessarily need to be here for? Do you feel comfortable with that?
I have 100% confidence in our leadership team.
Okay.
Sounds good to me. Right then, can I get a, um, motion to adjourn?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee adjourn at 9:47.
Second?
All those in favor?
I'd just like to point out, it's nine.